This meeting of the trustees of the Lamisa Middle School District is now in order. It is 6:00 PM September 21st, 2023. The forum is present with all board members present except Kevin Tolchak. This meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, it's this government code, chapter 551. Mr. Hernandez, would you please pray?
Yes. Father God, we just want to thank you this afternoon. It is written, "You're the same yesterday, today, and forever." And I just pray blessings upon this meeting, dear God. That you would guide them, that your Holy Spirit would give us the wisdom to whatever would have to be said tonight, dear God. We ask that you just keep blessing us. Be with the Lamisa School District, be with all the school districts, be with us as a country, as a nation, dear God, and guide us, and then we may just humble ourselves and hear your voice. In the name of Jesus, I just ask blessings upon this meeting, upon the school board, upon our school district, upon our lives. And to you will be the honor and the glory, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
President Gonzalez, board members, families, this is my favorite part of our board meetings, where we get to honor students and honor faculty. I challenged our principals to pick students that just resemble what Lamisa and Golden Tour Nation is all about, and I'm excited to hear them say some things about them and just honor them. What I would ask is, we put this at the beginning, so nobody has to start for the full board meeting, but if after the middle school goes, if you guys would hang out while high school goes, then we could get a picture of the board members with just the entire unit. But I will turn this over to Ms. Jasper, Lamisa Middle School Principal. They will kind of give you a bit of an update, and then they will present their students and they will present their staff.
Hi. It's always so nice to come and see y'all. On our update, when we started enrollment, we started out with 313 students, and then we pulled out enrollment today and we were at 332, so we've grown by 21 students, which is really exciting and good. I don't have a whole lot to share with you, we've just been rocking and doing what we're supposed to do, teaching kids and all that stuff. I am excited to tell you, and I think y'all will see it today, I'm really excited about this. So last year I had a dream or vision to give every one of my students a T-shirt that said Lamisa on it, not specific to middle school, just so that they had something that they could wear out and about whenever they're going to games, they're representing us as, you know, competitions, whatever. And so I was able to go out and talk to a couple people, and they tell my story, why? Because not a lot of our kids have those shirts and stuff, and it's, every kid needs one, you know? And I didn't want it to be a free shirt that had on the back, all these people donated, you know, and stuff like that. I wanted it to be a shirt that they could be proud of. And so I'm excited to say we were able to get that. I think y'all are going to approve my donations today, I hope, because I've been waiting for you today. But I'm really, really excited to get to do that. So every one of our students that comes into our campus will have a shirt that says Lamisa Golden Tour News. So with that, I will just head on to the good stuff. So tonight, I have one person, two people that couldn't come that I wanted to come and introduce to y'all. I'll start with them first since they're not here, and then we'll move forward. I wanted to bring up Lisa Yonahos, she's our attendance secretary, and I just wanted to brag about her because she's come in and she's just really jumped in and taken the initiative of learning upon herself, because when she came in, we didn't really have anybody to train her, you know? She just went in and she jumped in and she just learned it, and it's a lot. And her job, it's hard, it's making sure attendance, the ADA, we're all in compliance, I mean, all of that stuff. So she does really good, I'm proud to say we're never behind, we're always on point of the game, and I think that's a hard job to stay on top of, just because there's so much to it. And she also, with one of my other friends that I'm going to bring, she jumped in and took on cheer, and that's a big responsibility, and they rocked it, like, they're doing amazing with it, so I wanted to talk about them. And then the next person is Steve Garcia. This year he has a couple new classes he's teaching, he's teaching journalism, and then we opened up the visual arts and technology class, and he's really taken off and ran with that. So when Adam Welson came out to our camp, he talked a lot about AI, he talked about coding and stuff like that, and so that's something that Mr. Garcia's brought into that class, and it's not just spiked his interest, our kids are fully engaged in that class, and it's so exciting because there's so many opportunities in the future for our kids, just like Adam said, if y'all listen to that, there's just so much out there that the kids can do with that. So we're setting a foundation for futures, and I think that's so important. The next person I wanted to bring was Mr. Karion.
Come on up here. No, 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 you don't get to wait.
And Mr. Karion, he's just really a true light and representation of Lamisa. I have a lot of respect for him because he truly loves our kids, and he loves our communities, and he loves our parents, and so he goes above and beyond to make sure that he does everything he can for our kids to be successful. So we've talked about opening up tutorials, but prior to us even talking about it as a campus, he's already taken that initiative, and he's bringing kids in for extra help, I mean, so things like that speak volumes. And then also, I didn't get to brag about him much last year, but he's heading up our GT program, and he took our kids to robotics, which we talked about, and they haven't competed in 15 years, and we won. And so I'm really excited to see what he can do with the program this year. And the next friend I brought was Ms. Olfivedos, Elizabeth Olfivedos. And she comes to us brand new, and she's serving as an inclusionist in our campus, so she goes around and she helps students who need a little extra help in class, but she's come in and she's just really jumped in, she's asked, "Hey, how can I help? What can I do? We needed a new student council representative," and she was like, "I want to do it." And she's come in with a gazillion ideas, she's ready to take off and run with it, and that's what she's doing. So thank you for that. And she's always wanting to learn, and I love that. She's aspiring to be a teacher, so our goal is this is going to be one of our next Grow Your Owns right here. And then I brought Ms. Jennifer Garza, and she's our registrar, and that's a very important job too, because she's the one that our people get to first see when they come to our campus, besides Lisa's, they get to work with her. So she comes in and she does all the intake. She's amazing at getting everything we need from the incoming school district, wherever they're coming from, she gets everything she needs from them. And today she got to actually school somebody on House Bill, because we had House Bill 4545, and then it changed to House Bill 1416, and she was able to tell them what that was, and they're like, "We can stop." And so she just, again, really jumped in, and she's a light, like, if you're having a bad day, this is the girl you want to come see, because she makes your day amazing, she makes you laugh, and, I mean, there's no hard days having her. I mean, our office is bubbly, and it's really all of them, but she's a key component to that, and so I thank you. Next, we have Ms. Alina Vargas, she's very neat to us, and she's our principal secretary or administrative assistant, whatever you want to call her, she's like the base in the office. And she too, she's like jumped in, and I haven't had to teach her anything. She asked me one time, I was like, "I don't know, we're going to learn this together, and we're going to go, we're going to succeed, or we're going to bug out together," but we're just going in and locked on. But she's really jumped in, and, I mean, you've just taken it by the reins, and everybody loves her, and she brings a lot of light to our office, and she loves Lamisa, she loves our kids, and she has high standards, and I love that, and she holds people accountable, and she holds me accountable, and she keeps me on my toes.
How are your kids?
And then I brought several students, and I just love our kids, y'all. We have, all of our kids are great, I mean, they are all amazing, but I'm going to start with Logan Campos. And the first day at school, he was the first kid that greeted me, and he greeted me with the biggest smile, and every day he tells me, "Hi, Ms. Jasper." And I think he's a big light to our campus, because he exuberates kindness everywhere, and he's friendly with kids that aren't, you know, some people that aren't friendly, he's nice to everybody, and I just think that's something we need, and I thank you for that, because our world really does need a lot of kindness, and you keep being mean and being a rock star. And then next, we have Brooklyn Putman. She's a cutie. And Brooklyn, she came to us from Klondike, so I was so glad that she came here, and she wanted to be here. And it was really neat, because the first day wasn't so easy, right? It was so big, and it was a little overwhelming for her, but man, you go in our school now, you wouldn't know she's the Negro. She's not the Negro, she's like one of, she's one of our kids, and she spit in and acclimated, and our last pep rally, nobody wanted to play our bubble bopping game, or whatever it's called, and she was like, "I'll do it," and she was like, "Oh." I'm proud of her, and I'm so happy you're here with us. And next, we have Lucas Rocha. Lucas is just amazing, y'all, there's no other words. He's a light, and I've stuck to see him grow a lot over the last year, and he really stood up for himself here recently. He decided he wanted to be in athletics as a manager, and he knew what he needed to do to do that, and so he talked to Annalise and Matt, and he told them what he wanted, and they supported him, and so he went and he asked Coach Hood if he could be a manager, and what did Coach Hood say? He said, "Yeah." He also works in our office as an office aide, and he comes in and he does a great job. I mean, when we ask him to do anything, I mean, they'll tell you, he just comes in with the biggest smile, whatever we ask, he does, he doesn't complain about, you know, he has integrity, you know, he goes where he's supposed to do, he knows what he's supposed to do, and he's very accountable, and he keeps Lamisa lean on her toes. He keeps them in line, right? Tells them not to be salty. And he's just a great help, and I love that he's just really, he's really grown and matured a lot, and so I'm really proud of it. I'm proud of you. Next, I have, I'm going to come back to this one, I'm going to call it Lisa, Lisa Quayar. This girl right here, she works hard in everything she does, it's always 110%, no matter what she does, she, it's in the classroom and it's also with sports, and she has a great attitude in both places. In sports, she's really good, but she has, she's very humble, she's humble in everything she does, and she knows that, and then she goes to extra mile to keep kids accountable when she sees them, like, running, you know, she'll tell them, "Remember, we're supposed to walk." I mean, she's a true leader in our campus, and I really appreciate that. And when I tell her I need help, because I come to you a lot, like, "Lisa, I need your help, I got help." You know, run this hallway, and she's like, "Yes, ma'am, I got you." And she does it just like that, with that smile on her face, and so she's just a joy, and she always has that smile, even on her bad days, and so that's something I really love about you. Thank you. She's also one of our office aides, I forgot about that. And then next, we have Ms. Jess Garza. And her mom likes to... Jess has a pure heart, and she's one that, she's so sweet, she's respectful, and she goes above and beyond every day, and she works hard at everything she does. So this year, she wanted to be our cheer manager, and we didn't have one, and so we let her do that, and she's been amazing at it, and she keeps those girls in check, right? And she's really great at, like, she comes up with the pep rally skit, she works hard with getting that performed, she helps our mascot, anything the girls need, she helps do that, and then she keeps them motivated too, when it gets tough. And then Zaydan Black. And I saved Zaydan Black for last, because Zaydan really has captured my heart, y'all. Last year, we had, and not a rough year, but like, last year was just different, right? But this year, I've really seen Zaydan mature and just man up this year, and he's been very respectful, he does what he's supposed to do. The other day, we talked, and he's like, "Man, I almost won that." I said, "But the key is you didn't," right? So he knows, you know, and he wants to do good, and you're just amazing, and your heart is sweet, he does have a sweetheart, and he's good, you know, he's just a good kid. So I wanted to bring him out and tell you how proud I am of you, and just, it's a whole 180, y'all, and it's amazing, I'm proud of you. And he's playing football every day.
How tall is he?
He was not this tall last year.
I know, I walked down the hall, y'all, and I had to look up at a lot of our kids, and I was like, I didn't realize how short I was until I started looking up at people. So thank y'all, y'all make Lamisa Middle School amazing, and it's your school, and I'm proud of how y'all own it, everyone, and I'm honored to get to be a part of your life every day, thank you.
We're going to let high school go, and then y'all are all going to come up just like this, and we're going to go right there, and we're going to get a picture of them.
Ms. Jasper. I want to thank you so much for everything you've done. You can just, as soon as you walk into your school, you can feel the love, your staff is amazing, it takes wonderful leadership, and it's always been a pet peeve of mine when people say, "Oh, it's middle school, these kids," you know how it goes, but I've always hated that, because kids know when you love them and when they support them, and when you do that, they support you, and you and your staff have done that, and y'all are doing a great job. Thank you.
And next, I'm going to bring up our high school principal, Mr. Israel Carrer. And April, I'm glad you say that, because I feel like this is, I was telling somebody the other day, this is the best principals as a whole I feel like we've had, and I feel like all of our campuses are starting to feel comfortable, and he plays a big role in that at the high school.
Yes.
Good evening, we're President Ms. Gonzalez, Superintendent Ritchie, and members of the school board. Thank you for this opportunity to share a few things that have happened greatly to our school this 2023-24 school year. Students were able to pick up their schedules prior to school starting and on the first day. Thanks to our counselor, Ms. Baker, all the schedules were created and handed out on time. Also, within the first few weeks of school, Ms. Baker was making request changes accordingly, and has completed that task. If you know anything about schedule setting, those are difficult, because when you change one schedule, it has a domino effect with everybody else, and so really, you can tell she's a master, she's done that several times, I think. Students knew what our expectations were before coming to her for changes, and that is good leadership in my book. The front office staff of Ms. Segovia, Ms. Barera, Ms. Sanchez, and Ms. Douglas have been second to none, always assisting as soon as our stakeholders, our students, our parents, and our guests enter the building, showing the best of customer service. Now, I'm going to change direction, and I'd like to present to you a couple of the students that I have got to know in the short time that I've been here. They're not in any ranking order, so I just, it's just the way I was raised, to always present females first and then males second, and so that's what I've done here tonight. I'd like to say a few words about the first student. Most of my observation of her has been in the cafeteria and the hallways. She always has a smile on her face and interacts very well with other students. Let me just share a few words that her teachers have said about her. She always brings a smile and positive attitude to class. She is a hard worker and a great student to have in class. She's an exceptional student and athlete. She prides herself in her work and her character. She holds herself to a high standard and maintains a positive attitude. Her work is simply outstanding, or she approaches every task with a "I can do" attitude. Her dedication is real inspiration to everyone around her. And board members, I'd like to present to you Jocelyn Gonzalez. I'm not sure she was sitting at the back table, but every time I saw her, she was smiling and always seems to get along with all her friends, and when I see her, and I was glad to see that other teachers said the same thing, that she always has a smile, and so I was not off at all, and so I appreciate you. And it's been a short time, and so I think the students are getting used to me, and I'm getting used to them, and I don't know if they know how to take me yet, but we'll get to it. Thank you. Now, the next thing I'd like to present, I see mostly every morning, because I stand out there greeting kids, and as he enters the school building in the morning, he has a bright smile that is contagious. As he passes by, as I say, "Good morning," he returns with a good morning back, that with one of, with that one-of-a-kind smile, that makes me say to myself, "That is why I do this job." When I see him at his table in the morning, he's just very happy and always shows respect and kindness to his classmates sitting at the table. He's a member of the student council, and is in his first year of culinary arts. I believe this is his first year in Lamisa ISD, and we are glad to have him. Board, I present to you Samuel Nelson. This is how he greets me, and he greets everyone. He's just a great guy, who brings a great atmosphere, a positive atmosphere to our school. The final student I'd like to present to you, I think I met him before I met anybody when I came here. When I first met him, he gave this spirit of joy, peace, and happiness. He is a stranger to no one. When I see him in the mornings, whether it's into the building, in the hallways, or in the cafeteria, he always is shaking his classmates' hands and giving them a hug. But not only does he give them a hug, it's like saying to them, "I'm glad you're here and glad to see you." You could just see it in his body, his body action. He's also very generous with his fist bumps, he's always giving everybody fist bumps. He makes sure that everybody feels very special every time he talks to them or he sees them, that's just his character. He works hard and even makes time to help others with their work. He is involved in student council, marching band, he's a basketball manager, and a member of the United Champions School Track Team. Board, I present to you Austin Ranford. He's a good kid, right? A good kid brightens up the school every day, and I appreciate him very much. As I close for this evening, I'd like to say a few words about the teacher I'd like to present to you all this evening. I've read books and articles about what effective teachers can do, and that is what this teacher does each and every day. What effective teachers do, they inhabit the classroom. Effective teachers are charismatic teachers that have a natural presence in the classroom. They ooze a certain confidence and give off a vibe that lets students know they are in safe hands. A teacher with presence takes ownership of the classroom without controlling it, they have the class eating out of their hands. Their persona does all the work without much finger lifting. Also, effective teachers develop expertise, and this is what this teacher does. Effective teachers put their heart and soul into developing curriculum expertise and continuous improvement. They constantly strive to improve what they know and commit to regular and consistent study of their craft as lifelong learners. They're always studious, creative, striving to stay ahead of the thrill of finding out more. There have been several evenings that I have, that I am leaving the building, and this teacher is in her room, working away on grading, preparing for tomorrow's lesson and activities, and not leaving anything to chance. One of my mentors and former superintendents would say that effective teachers plan their work and work their plan. This is exactly what this teacher does on a daily basis. Board, I present to you Ms. Michelle Luella. It's been a short time with the campus, there's a lot of work to be done, but I'm looking forward, because I have good students, and I have good staff that are going to get us to where we need to get. Thank you for your time this evening.
We thank you. I can tell you one thing, because I was talking, you know, a couple staff was talking to me, "How's it going?" And the one thing they said that really stood out was, they said, "Mr. Carter talks to everybody, he's trying to get to know all the kids, but the one, the kids who are more shy and a little more to themselves, he will stop in the hallway and make sure he has a conversation with them, and that's everything." And also, thank you for putting up with my 800 questions. Thank you.
I'm going to move this podium, if I can get my middle school group back up, and we'll move right over here. Board members, if we can get one picture with everybody, high school, middle school, everybody. And I'm adding somebody like Ms. Rocha with a little more skill to help me arrange on this.
I got you.
Thank you. Parents, once it's closed, come on up, get your picture. After this, parents, get your brief to depart. You get one more, your quota done. It's much better than the old.
Thank y'all, thank y'all.
Thank you, Jasper. Are we ready? Yeah, they've been in that other room. They just, it was too crowded. I thought, once they leave, they can slide in. She doesn't have a parking spot.
No, you don't think you can park in my parking spot? I'm like, oh, I guess I can.
All right, we're ready. Where are we at? Now we get. I was gonna slide now.
Well, I guess now we'll go to.
Take a motion to have previous presented. Six to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Mr. Mundy?
You ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think the first thing we have up is the, let's start with the monthly check register. And let's, let's go to page 10. I want to talk just a minute. I know that's, it seems like we're gonna go real quick, but we'll come back to some of that. The other items, I just want to do a quick reading on what page 10 looks like. It's the monthly check register. And it has the totals. To the far left, you see the funds. For example, the first one is 180 athletic funds. This, this allows for you to take a look at some of the different funds that we use to classify the check register. It's just a summary, and it, and it gives you a quick point of reference to see where some of the, where some of the money is being spent. First one is.
Oh, we have that.
I'll have to save the investment report.
Yeah.
I'll have to save the investment report.
You keep talking, I'll go make them copies.
I didn't get the check register.
I have it in the. Go ahead.
So, uh, let's go to the investment report, and we'll come back to, we'll come back to the check register. For the first item that you have is the investment report. This is for the quarter beginning August 31st. And it's, of course, June, July, and August. Uh, you can see your categories to the left, the operating account, the payroll account, et cetera, the debit account, and, or the debt account. And one of the things that, uh, you know, when I look at this, I just look at things that change, so, and I try to bring them to your attention. And in July, if you look at the debt service, which is about halfway down, you'll see it's at 1.8 million dollars. And then if you go to August and look at the debt service, you'll see it's down to 534,112 dollars. Uh, we, we pay our, we pay our bond payment in this month. So that influences your bottom line, because we started in June with a balance of 20 million dollars, 20.6 million dollars July, 20.2 million dollars, and then in August, we had, we were down to 17 million dollars. And that'll come right back, right back up, and we start collecting our taxes. The first three months after the, after the year, we'll, we'll collect a high percentage, you know, probably 80, 85% of our taxes, and build that, build that balance right back up. And that, that's a total of about 1.4 million dollars. And for this month, our total, uh, our total expenditure for the month, for the check register, one, or 1.8 million dollars. We had about 419,000 dollars in cash checks written for the month of, for the month of August. Uh, any questions on that, on the report? One more thing, I think you see, when you look at the very bottom, you see some tabs on your report. You typically don't get that. I put that in there as a reference for the, for the activity for the year. To the far right, you'll see one that says to the total. And I, the only reason why I want to bring that up to you is that this past, uh, this past year, the total amount collected as, as passive income, our interest income, was 993,220, or 993,228 dollars. So right at a million dollars was collected from, from the return on our fund balance, the investment of our, our fund balance. So, so that's, uh, you know, it's, you know, the rate that we're getting from the bank is a good rate. Uh, you know, I think Charles Swalden, they, they matched that pretty well. So we're getting a good rate from the bank, and the, and the interest rate has done a good job of climbing, climbing out to a point where we're getting 5.63% right now. So our returns, our returns are good, you know, that's good, that's good money, because it's, uh, it's, it's not necessarily, I build it in, but I don't build in this, this kind of, this much money.
They have the check registry now, huh?
All right, okay, uh, so page 10. This is always a good place to go just to kind of look at things in general. What, what, it just tells you where the check writing, the check writing, where the money's going. And you'll see to the far left, you'll see, you'll see, like I said, the athletic fund, the general operating fund, uh, the cafeteria fund, uh, and then the next three are grants, and then the last one is your bond debt. And that's where you'll see to the far right, the 1.4 million dollars that went out for the month. And then you have different amounts. The two, the two that, that I look at, because they're larger, is the general operating fund and the, and the bond debt. And that's a quick way to look at where our money goes each month without having to look at a lot of the details. So I, it's just a place that I go when I'm looking, when they're checking, let's go to the back, actually, the back two pages, but I go to page 10 and just look at that, just to see where, what categories our money's being spent. Now, now if we want to go back to page one on the check register. Also, the way that I look at this is I just, uh, I go through and just look at the items and some of the descriptions, just see what catches my eye. I'll give you an example, uh, on the first page, that's seven down, you'll see 7,467 dollars. And if you look to the left of that, you'll see maintenance on fire extinguisher. And when I see that, my first thought is, that's, that's a pretty large amount, but it's for all our fire extinguishers, and it's an annual fee. And I just want to know that. I want to know how much it is and, and whether it's monthly, quarterly, or annually, that we, we make to pay. So when I, and I do just look at the larger numbers. Sometimes I look at the category, just to see the differences in the category.
And they have my copy, so there's a whole lot of my notes.
So anyway, that's the, that's kind of how I look at it. So I go down, I just look at like that. And some of the things, like down closer to the bottom, I have 1,614 dollar circle, because it's the pump, pump grease traps on all the campuses. And, uh, my curiosity about that is how often do we do that? And that's, it's, it's, it was done in July, April, and January, but it's really as, as needed. They come and clean those out as, as needed. So that's ju, that's just an example of the way that I look at it. Uh, you know, one of the things we've been watching are repairs and maintenance to the bus, so I highlighted some of those areas. I didn't do the total math on it, but there were several items, you know, one did 2,000 dollar items that, that, that went into bus repair.
And we're tracking things that haven't been tracked kind of month to month. For instance, our electric, our, um, we're about to install on the pumps at the bus barn, um, a coat that hasn't ever been on there, so people are gonna have to swipe, so we will know which vehicle and who is getting the gas out of the pump. And we're gonna be real curious to see if we see a change in how much has been spent month to month. So I'm, I'm kind of excited to see what, what things kind of start trending the right way.
We haven't talked much about it, except that we're gonna trend it and see how it goes, and we're probably gonna just compare it to last year's numbers. And we're, and as I thought about it, I thought, well, we, we need to compare and see how much we're spending, but I also thought that we need to track the volume of the fuel and compare the fuel volume, because we know that prices can fluctuate, but we also know that the usage will be consistent with last year's usage. So the best way to track your fuel is not necessarily the cost, it's, it's the amount of fuel that we're using. So we'll be tracking that and go back, we'll carry those numbers back.
Would you track that like six months a year?
Which I track month to month.
Right, but like to see.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We started like the, the month I got here, I had them start pulling the last few years. But we'll do it month to month, and then we'll pull it, as it's happy year to year and see.
So we'll watch the trend, and we'll, we'll probably put the trend in some form of, some sort, sort of graph, so that we can just visually see, see the, compare the trends to see what, see if there's anything that jumps out. And that's a, that's a good way to do our fuel, but it's also a good way to do our kilowatts for our electricity. You know, again, we can look at price, and we will look at price, because we need to compare what we're paying. And as I thought about this, I thought, okay, when you do the electric bill, look at your three things. Your total cost, your cost per kilowatt, and your total kilowatts. To see that, and then trend your, uh, trend it, trend it that way, so that you'll, you'll get a real picture of what we're paying per kilowatts, what we're paying. I don't know how much we can pick up from the past year, but we will start trending those things now and try and go back as time allows and pick up some of that previous information.
On your maintenance for the, uh, for the fire extinguishers and your pumping up your grease straps and stuff, do we have a contract with these companies?
Fire extinguishers, yes. Fire extinguishers, yes.
Okay.
The other, I don't think we do, because it doesn't happen as much.
Gotcha. Well, I didn't know if, if you spend money at, at a certain amount, then you have to go out for three quotes, or do y'all do that, or do we do that?
These were already all established already, so these are vendors that have already, we inherited the contract, I guess, is, is what I'm saying. And so once that expires, some of them are three years, some of them four, five, then we will have to.
So we do have a contract?
And we, we do that, we compare, we, we always look the best, uh, we find the time, you know, and trend it. Uh, you know, and also, an example, uh, I was, uh, when I was in England, we, we had a big, big propane tank. It was as big as a truck tanker, and they'd come in once, about once or twice a year and fill it up. And we used to set our prices in the summertime. And I asked, why do we set our prices in the summertime? What's the deal about the summertime? Well, what I learned was that's the highest price we can trench across.
Just like the peaks on electricity.
And I said, well, we're not doing that anymore. We're gonna come, we're gonna do it six months from now, because the prices are lower now. We're not gonna have a contract with you guys until, until we get the right kind of price. And that's the way that we do, that's just an example of the way that we do. So is there anything else that y'all might want to ask me about the check register?
The field house door and locks, is that just like an upgrade, or was there, it says 18,000?
Where are we at?
On page three?
That's the gates, I believe.
Oh, the gates.
The gates, the motor.
I didn't know about the room and silver.
Yes, and that's, we capitalized that. Hopefully, your next report is general fund by function. So.
The only thing I have of yours is the investment. The only thing I have in the replication bills.
Yeah, the check registry is what I have, and that's what I gave them. Anything else you have, I don't have a copy of.
Okay, do you, do you have?
What, what did they?
What should be looking at, your next item should be general fund by function. No?
No.
No, it wasn't uploaded.
That's funny that.
Not before, replication of the only investment. And donations. Budget amendments.
Okay, so the, the general fund by function is not there, let's, let's get a copy of that for the chapter report.
You can jump down and talk about the donations while we wait on that.
Yes. I'm sorry, I, I don't know that we had, we had downloaded it once, and now we had to download it again, so I don't know what, why did we get there? Um, donations, I think the donations, uh, are Mitch Hall for 5,900 dollars. He rated pump as about 1,700 dollars. And these donations were the ones that were provided to the middle school for their, for their shirts. She went out and, she's asked if we had money in, and I said, I don't think so. So she went out and got, she went out and got, got them. It was in the.
That's a lot of shirts, you know? And I, I think it's, I thought it was a great idea, because just in the last week, guys, her and Roman's gone up 10 students since Monday. Um, which is, um, that's pretty awesome. We're district wide, we are now officially, if she went up nine students, we are, for the first time in a long time, we hit 1,500 students. We've been in that 1,400 since I, since after COVID. We're still good, though, because we're way, 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 way below that, that number. But 1,500 is awesome. That makes me really happy. We keep, keep going home.
The next item, oh, thank you.
Look at you, didn't even miss a beat.
Yeah, better be quick.
Like John Man's been right now.
Before we start, what are we supposed to look at next? I'm sure it's there.
So we'll start with the general fund by function. That's listed as page one, and it's for the month of August, it's the last month of the year. And we'll just start at the first column that says revised budget past the description. And you'll see that our budget was at 23,651 dollars, and year to date, we ended up at 22,747,000 dollars. Uh, we did have a higher month for the, than I expected for monthly activity, but that's primarily because of some of the wages that we paid out. I think that was a retention bonus. So, so it was a good month. We came out ahead of budget over actual, on expenses by 940,000 dollars. You can see that to the far right. We removed all encumbered. And the unencumbered balances, if you look under the, under, unencumbered balances, you'll see dollar amounts there that are, there, there's no minus sign. Remember, we've been running a couple of months with a minus sign. Well, I did the general entry, which we'll go over in just a second, to clean those up and get them into a good balance. And we were able to use most of the, uh, overage from plant maintenance and operations. So we were able to clean that up pretty easy. And I, and most of the numbers are large enough to have us a cushion in case something arises. Uh, we waited till the 19th to do this, so that we were sure that most everything that should be covered and paid for account, through accounts payable, like the rules, do encumber, uh, that all was reconciled before, and the bank was reconciled before we could, before we could close that out and make sure there might not be anything else that would fit this. So that we wouldn't look to get back into a negative balance on those. So for expenses, we were 940,000 dollars ahead. But for income, if you go to the next page, you'll see that, that the budget was at 20 million. Uh, and we, we ended up activity wa, activity wise for the year at 19.9 million. If the 20 million, budget was at 20.4, your actual was at 19.9, or almost 20 million. That's a 409,000 dollar difference. And if you look to the far right, you'll see that 409, that's considered unencount, unencumbered. And that's, that's a 409 dollar reduction in what we planned in budget. So it's, if you take the 409 and subtract that from the 904,000 number ahead, that's our net difference that goes to our fund balance. So, uh, in my opinion, that, I predict, I, I predicted a little bit better than that, but, but half a million dollars going back into the fund balance versus going out the door is, is a pretty good method. Uh, any questions? Okay, the next sheet that I have with me is the monthly capital outline. That's two sheets. You've got one that's itemized and the other that's categorized by fund. If you look on the second one on page two, where it's categorized by the fund, you'll see that, uh, the general fund paid out 72,000 dollars. The federal program grant paid out 22,000 dollars, that was Perkins for a greenhouse. And then the capital project fund paid the final payment to the architects of 3,981 dollars for a. for a total of ninety-nine thousand for the period. Any questions? Want to move on to the budget amendment? So the, to the far right, you'll see proposed budget. That's the changes that came from the amendment. And if you look in the middle, you can see where we increased or decreased those particular line items. Most of, well, all of it came, was covered by, by maintenance. That five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Just moving around so that we would have a positive balance in our year in unencumbered. And I think.
Just any questions?
I think that's, that's all I have. No purchases over fifty thousand for this month. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Take a motion to the second presenter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next, we'll go to administrative boards.
For members, I do apologize for the link. We'll trim down some of the stuff we do that I do love, that we get to honor since students and staff. I think you could see it meant a lot to those kids and it meant a lot to those teachers. So thank you all for allowing us to do that. I'm gonna go in, it says underneath presentation, it says A, Bauman, B, highlight, C, presentation. I'm actually gonna go B, C, A. That way, we start with our highlight of staff member, then we're gonna present our new SRO position. And then I will turn it over to Ms. Bauman, and she's gonna go quickly through the district improvement plan in that process. I wanted to do my own, and I called it MVP, right? MVP of the month. And my goal with this is to kind of bring attention to someone that y'all might not know too much about what they do. And I wrote something that I will read, but I also may get off of it a little bit. Ms. Carpenter, why don't you go ahead and come up here? I met Ms. Carpenter when I took the job in North Elementary. I had heard about Ms. Carpenter, didn't know. And when I walked in, she was one of the first people that I met. And I, I was talking about you just the other day, to those three. And to think you went from someone that I really didn't know anything about to someone that I just think the world of, it happened really fast. And it happened fast because of who you are and the job you do. I'm gonna read this. Melissa Carpenter has held many roles in Lamisa ISD. I first had the pleasure of working alongside of her at North Elementary when I became a principal. At the time, she was a special education lead on that campus, which means she helped with scheduling, and she took care of our life skills students. And she quickly became that person, and I wrote that in all capitals to make sure I stressed that. Because if I needed something, she was there. And it didn't matter if it was in her job description or not. And it didn't even matter if I socked her, if I, I didn't have to seek her out. Like she had a sixth sense, Richie needs something, I turned around, she'd be standing there. Like, what do you need? And she became that utility person. If I needed someone in the lunchroom, if I need someone in the hallway, if I need someone to go speak to bathroom, recess duty, take care of a kid, she was that person. And she was in the trenches at North, and unless you were there, you'll never know. Y'all hear the horror stories every now and then, and you're like, I cannot believe that teacher had to deal with that. That's her everyday life. I've seen her kicked, I've seen her punched, I've seen her choked, she's seen me kicked, punched, and choked. But she knows that she, she's gotta love those kids that nobody else is gonna love, and she never bats an eye. There was no student too tough, no situation too hard, zero complaint. She jumps in and gets her hands dirty. Since our time together, I feel like her value has become more known and appreciated. I don't know if y'all know her, but I do, the district has become to know the secret that I found out, that when you need something, dial her number. The scope of her influence is no longer contained to North because she is now on all campuses, helping with all of our hard behaviors. She's become a diagnostician, and a lot of her time is spent testing students, but she has still never said no to me when I have called her and needed her help. I have never one single time needed her where she has not jumped at the opportunity. It doesn't matter how busy she is, Melissa Carpenter is always willing to jump in and do anything. And I also, I think y'all are the same, I, I think a lot of the person when I meet their kids, right? You can tell a lot about a person when they meet their kids. And as a high school principal, I got the pleasure to know that guy, May Carpenter. And man, what a pleasure it was to get to be around him. And the way he behaves is a direct reflection of the way he was raised. And that is with class, that is with respect, and he is a hard worker. I am proud that Melissa Carpenter is a Lamisa Golden tornado. I'm very proud that I got the pleasure of working with you, and I still get the pleasure of working with you guys. She is exactly what Lamisa Golden Taurus should be about. So please give her a bow. Love you.
Can we have her number?
She'll help. Can we, real quick, before we move on, just get a picture with the whole family, real quick. May, you have to take your hat off. Let's come on up. Let's come right over here. More members, I bet y'all can just stand up and y'all don't have to move. You are the first ever MVP.
I did.
I didn't mean for y'all to get out, I meant for y'all to stand up. Thank you so much. Perry, it's so good to see you. Okay, moving on to number C, goodbye, guys. Thank you all so much for coming. Position of, qualification of our new SRO position. Officer Flores, if you and Lieutenant Roche, go ahead, come on up here. And I'll let Mr. Roche, Lieutenant Roche speak a little bit. But Lamisa ISD recently reinstated the position of sergeant. And I explained to everybody in the board why I believed that was important. I believe chain of command matters. This is no longer, this is no longer a place where it's all about one group of people. This is about everybody. It was a position that existed in the past, and I'm unaware of when it went away, but it hasn't existed since I returned from Fort Worth. The idea is even more important, the idea of chain of command is even more important with law enforcement. Because anytime Lieutenant Roche is not on our campuses, it's gonna be more important than ever for the district to know who to go to in the case of an emergency. Chief Peterson couldn't be here tonight, but he was in on this. Once we decided to make this decision, I kind of left it up to Lieutenant Roche and Chief Peterson. And Lieutenant Roche did a really good job of opening it up to the entire department. Those that were interested applied, and he chose Gabriel Flores as the candidate best suited to fill the role of sergeant of our SRO. Congratulations, Officer Flores.
Come on, come on. Excellent, I was given the opportunity. As Mr. Ritchie says, that the sergeant position went away probably four and a half, five years ago. Jermaine Davis was our last sergeant, and once he left, the position was done away with. When I was brought in, you know, I was like, you know, we need a chain of command. There's a chain of command here at the board, we have a president, a vice president. So in law enforcement, it is needed. Like Mr. Ritchie says, I'm gone, the officers need to know who, you know, they're gonna respond to. Who's gonna take the lead? You know, and, and he knows that I'm gone, so automatically, he's gonna know who to call next. So he gave me the reins and, hey, it's gonna be your position, he's gonna be your sergeant. So what it is that you wanna do, and I thank him so much for giving me that opportunity, you know, to do what I thought I needed to do, which was the best for this department. I opened it up, had the guys come in, interview. We had, it was a tough, tough interview. I made it as tough as I could, based on my experience. And I come up with the best applicant, which is Sergeant Gabriel Flores.
Flores, I would. I'll be like the movie, the movie that starts about me.
Well, I just, I wanna thank, you know, Lieutenant Roche and Mr. Ritchie and the Lamisa Police Department for giving me this opportunity. It's, it's, it's good to be in this position, especially from the last time that I was here. I think Mr. Ritchie's doing a great job, you know, leading this, this district. And it's like I told him, I had opportunities to go other departments, but this is, this is a place where I really wanna establish my roots, you know. I've been serving this community since 2015 in February, and I wanna continue serving. So when the opportunity came up and they, they told me about the sergeant position, I knew that I was gonna be the right one for the position. So I was gonna make sure that I would be the right one for the position, you know. The other officer that, that was on there, he, he's a great officer, you know. So like Lieutenant Roche said, I mean, the interview was really, really, really tough. So again, I just wanna thank y'all, you know, for giving me that opportunity, for y'all to open it back up. And I'm excited, I'm excited to be a part of this district. And like I told Mr. Ritchie and Lieutenant Roche, man, you know, I see a big, big future for us, and I wanna be able to see it through, you know what I mean? So thank you all again.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll jump back up to A. If Ms. Bauman will start making her way up here. She is going to kind of go over the overview of your district improvement plan. It is attached in your board book, it's a complicated document, and it's a very long process that, she won't say this, but I will, it had not always been done with the greatest fidelity. And if you know anything about Ms. Bauman, you know she is going to do things thoroughly and exactly as they should be done. So I will let her kind of talk you through how that looks.
They'll go fast. There's lots of, lots of things that y'all can read on your own time. And first of all, you'll notice this looks very different than what it's looked like in the past. So region twenty has kind of taken over. And federal programs, mainly Title I, which is where a lot of this comes from and while we have, while we get to do this. And so they created what is called a CCNA, which is a collaborative comprehensive needs assessment. And all federal programs require one, state programs require one, but they all have different components of what they require. So what they do is they consolidate it all into one. So everything in this document covers the, the things we need for Title I, for Title II, Title IV, all, all the good stuff, plus our state comp ed, which I'll talk about very briefly. So for the first, lots of pages, it's just going through your statute, the things you need to know if you really wanna go see what we've gotta do. And since we are a one-campus district, this is a combination district and campus improvement plan. They have a couple of different things they have to have, so it's all inherent to you. And so by just skipping down lots of pages, you'll see all the things that talk about what are needed. The very last three pages. And back in the summer, we had, well, first of all, before school got out last year, we sent out a survey. We sent it to parents, students, staff, and community members. And there are certain things that, for a CNA that you ask. So because a lot of it has to do with where are you gonna spend all this money that you get? So we were asking, what is it that parents wanna see? What do students wanna see? Staff, what do you need? And that informed a lot of these decisions. Then in the summer, we came and we had a group of people come up here, there are like eight areas in the CNA. And we set up in here and we went around in groups. Okay, what are our needs? What are our strengths? What are our priorities in each area? You know, all these posters and all the, all the fancy stuff. But all of that goes into this. So those last three pages is a summary of all of that put together, going through in each area, what we as a committee and as, and from the survey, determined were our strengths, our needs, and our priorities. Taking all of that, that goes into what we normally, the only thing we ever have really looked at in the past are the goals. And but right before you get to the goals, there's a page that says, um, I think it says state compensatory education. It's like, hello, looks like that. I don't have page numbers, I would tell y'all. And state comp ed, we get about two million dollars a year for, and it has to be used for our students that are identified as at-risk. Fifty-five percent of that has to go directly to students and services.
Seventeen.
People, and resources, things like that. The remaining forty-five percent can go elsewhere. Can you see it? Or am I just talking wrong? I'll keep talking. And so on this, you'll see the difference in what they categorize as the at-risk students compared to our population as a whole. And what they look like, look at is not our approaches. They look at where they are performing, at meets level and above. And so what we looked at with this, there is a, there is a difference between how they're performing, but in general, we've gotta close that gap and get our meets and masters improving. So taking that, and then it goes into the next page, and y'all, this blew my mind because I've never had to look at this part. But there is a chart on here that shows our federal funds, our state funds, and our local funds with roundabout estimates. This had to be done before we found out what everything was going to be. But so Title I, we get seven hundred and twenty thousand. And so what do you do with that? Anything that you wanna spend federal money on has to tie back to that CNA or your dip goals, your district improvement plan goals. After that long stuff with all the money, it goes straight into goals. This is the main thing we've looked at. We have five goals. And one of them is academic, so we'll provide an aligned curriculum instructional framework to close the achievement gap for all students. And underneath that goal, we have smaller goals and strategies. And you don't want me to go through those, or you wanna read them on your own?
I said, just go through the goals, or y'all get with that, just the big goals?
So goal one has to do with your academic achievement. Goal two, and these are based off of the governor or TEA's priorities, and has to do with recruiting and retaining teachers. So we're going to recruit, retain, and support teachers and administrators. And then we have goals and strategies for how we're going to do that. And we have two goals under that one as well. No, three, just kidding. And goal three, one of the priorities that I don't think is a surprise to anybody has to do is safety. So all Lamisa ISD students will be educated in a learning environment, in learning environments that are safe, drug-free, and conducive to learning. So when we're spending our Title IV money, which has a lot to do with what they call the well-rounded education, safety, when we decide what to spend it on, we come back. What did our, our committee, what has our community decided we need to spend the money on? So we don't just spend it on whatever. Goal four, we're going to increase the number of students awarded CCMR credit. This is one that we're still kind of waiting to see how everything plays out with what they do with CCMR, but it is a huge part of what we want our students to eventually get to. We want them to be college career and military ready. We want them to earn their certificates, we want them to do all that. So we've set some specific goals and objectives for that. And then the very last goal is that our families and our community will be partners in the education of Lamisa ISD students. One of the biggest pushes is parent and family engagement. So Frankie has helped out a lot with this. We have a new parent and family engagement plan that we'll be talking to our parents about, have talked to them about at Title I meetings that we've already had, and then parent conferences. And super fast.
The file is so big, on some of y'all's iPads, it's not scrolling.
I'm seeing some looks on faces, I don't know that y'all are seeing the same.
I opened it with scroll, and I had, when I opened it, it was on, on a tape.
And then you put scroll, okay, that was probably.
I don't know what you got going on with that.
Do I have any questions?
Yeah, you're good.
Yeah, it's big.
So this does have to be approved. You'll see that we do this at the beginning of every year, but it's, once we approve it, that doesn't mean it can't change. If our needs change in the middle of the year, we can make changes to both the needs assessment and this. This has to be pretty much in place when we start looking at our federal funds that are coming in, so we know how to spend on and how to allot that money.
And the change that y'all do, is that something you have to keep bringing back to the board, or is it?
If it's something major and drastic, not under those five goals, then yes. But that's, it's normally just a strategy or something here and there.
Like if we change the big goal, yes, we change the strategies. Any questions for Ms. Bauman? Thank you, Ms. Bauman.
A second.
I, I do want to compliment Ms. Baumann. She, she like, I heard Mr. Carr talking about Llewellyn being late at night. If you drive by here late at night, her car is often still parked here because she puts in a lot of good work.
Is she in the building?
What's that?
Is she in the building or she?
Cars are here. You know what?
How dare he question you?
All right, so now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Greg Nelson. He is going to, and I, it was in the, uh, board update from last night, but he's going to go over the files.
Oh, he already, oh!
I heard it third.
I didn't even realize what we did here. We're not even a Christmas, guys. She was. Y'all kind of know.
Are we ready for Dr. Nelson? They're all here for Dr. Nelson. I just heard I wanted a third. I thought it was a third, we're good.
I went along with it, I didn't even know.
Madam President, Board Members, Mr. Ritchie, Burnett, um, as you know, uh, I've asked that you guys, and I appreciate you guys reconsidering the, uh, compensation plan. That process was, uh, pretty extensive to get it to you. And since then, I did notice a few things that needed to be improved. I provided you guys with a document that's shared with you, the updates, there being three additions or increases. Those are things that, uh, lined up with our S R O adjustment to make sure that we're in the right place when we do that, and so that we can have leadership structure willing to come forward as well as a stipend that did not have equity. Most stipends, if it's at the high school, it's one amount. If it's at the middle school typically, it's about half. This one was about a quarter, and that just wasn't fair. It's hard to get a sponsor when you're not given very much of a stipend. So that was one adjustment. There were five things on the plan that needed to move around to the right area. Didn't necessarily change anything other than make sure they were placed strategically, the S R O, uh, again being a major part of that. Two positions were actually reduced. They were at a higher level of the pay plan. The staff purpose pay didn't change, but they were out of alignment, so they needed to be moved down so that in the future, when we hired those positions, we're not paying too much. And, uh, those were taken care of. There were, there were two things that were on last year's plan that should have transferred over, but I failed to catch those two particular items. I listed those. And then just some clarification, so that when we give a stipend, people know what those stipends are for. No, no guess about, well, why do you give that stipend? We wanted to be crystal clear with that. So about a few, uh, clarifications. You've had a chance to look at it. Uh, I guess at this time, I'll ask if there are any questions that I might be able to answer before you vote later in the agenda.
I know. And I brought it up before. On the critical area stipend.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I still feel like our English, science and math, uh, still need to be at the, back at the original stipend. I know other schools are dropping it down to the thousand, two thousand. I, I would, I mean, I would like to see it back at the ten if we can find a qualified person. Our scores are still not where they need to be. If we can, if we can steal a teacher that's qualified from another school around and they're dropping, I mean, to me, that, that stipend is worth it. It was ten. Because years ago, they all dropped to ten. And then when all the schools are dropping it, I mean, I think that would be a bonus of us if we could steal a teacher to be qualified.
Especially because we need to.
That's me, I mean.
Especially in that area since we, it was, wasn't it? At some point, science was a very.
Yeah, math and reading has kind of trumped it just because the state is putting so much more emphasis on math and reading, but I mean, they're all still needs. In this day and age of being hard to find teachers, ev- everything's important, you know, so.
I think if you find a certified math and science or English teacher that, I mean, I, I don't think the stipend should be higher than, uh, some of those others I'm looking at. That's me.
I agree.
Well, as you know, we, we look at it every year. Uh, we have a contractor that we work with who pretty much helps districts across the state, uh, make sure that each district is lining themselves up to be competitive with those that they are in competition for, for talent. I don't disagree with you, sir or ma'am, but I do feel that, uh, I think part of our strategy should be to get our base salaries up high enough where we compete at the base level, uh, because that's where, where you're going to lose more teachers than you do when you're looking at stipends. Because stipends are, uh, year to year, but base salaries are there to stay. And so when the district like EduCally is paying, uh, as much as they are, Midland Band as much as they are well over what our, uh, teachers with 25 years make, that makes us vulnerable to them. And it's going to be, having a $5,000 or $8,000 or $10,000 stipend is not going to start to draw them from doing what they're doing in those areas here. Now, it might help a little bit in our general area, but we haven't seen evidence of that. That's the thing that we, we have to look at. We, we have the highest stipends, sometimes four times as much as other districts around us, and it wasn't helping us fill those positions with certified, uh, people. We still had a lot of facilitators. And so I would just try to look at that as, as you guys make a decision, as we bring you data, we'll bring you whatever data you want. We'll, we'll tell you what the districts right around us are paying, what the districts in the extended area are paying in terms of base salary and stipends. I think we're much further behind in base salary than we were ahead in those few stipend areas. And remember, we grandfathered those areas, so we're not going to lose those people. It was just for new people. But all positions we had, we were still only able to hire a handful of certified people. The rest were able to fill with, with, uh, uh, facilitators, and they all qualify for the stipends. So it's, to me, it's a valid point, and, and we definitely need to be mindful of what you guys desire, because you set the tone and we, we, we work to, to put forth the agenda that you, uh, that you approve. At this time, I, I'd like a lot more information to see if, if we, if we offered a $20,000 for, dollars for an English teacher, would that get someone to come here versus where they are now as opposed to, you know, the ten? Didn't seem to be working, but we'll do whatever you guys direct. I appreciate that.
So what you're saying, what, what you're saying is you would rather go up more on their base salary than a stipend? And is that why we went? Like, why did we go so, from ten to?
Well, the reason it went from ten to, what is it on there? Two is that, that's, that's, ten was, two was about what everybody else was doing. So what I was going to propose, Mr. Man, is why don't we find a middle ground? We don't have to go all the way to ten, we go five.
Why would the middle school English teacher make thirty, two fifty stipend and the high school English teacher only do a thousand stipend? What's, what's more critical there?
In that sense, they were looking at the foundation of getting it taught then. I don't disagree with your point either. That's why I'm saying, would it be worth looking at not going all the way to ten, but going from five to six? Still substantially more.
I'm good with that.
Substantially more.
I just think that's more important than a commuter allowance or travel allowance or, uh, some of these other six thousand. I mean, I could go through so long, but I don't want to call a lot out. I mean, yeah, I mean, the gate, I mean, I mean, yeah, I mean, I mean, those are things we look at scores is what we get held to accountability for, you know? We brought up the ag, the ag stipend.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we reduced it, but I don't think we had a livestock program this year, so we have the other, we have the other programs with it.
Yes, sir.
So, but we get held to accountability on those three subjects by the stipend.
No doubt. You, you're exactly right. And, uh, like Mr. Ritchie said, we can look at it anytime you want. If you, if your statement is look at it in the future for upcoming compensation plans, we can do that. If you want to take a look at it now and in adjustment mid-year, you know, you have the right to ask for that as well, and we can definitely do it.
Are the, the people we have in positions now, are they certified and getting the stipend?
That's what I was about to say, I believe, and I don't want to speak on this, but I believe there were no new certified people that came in, so they would have all been grandfathered in. But I don't want to say that because I could be forgetting one or two.
Right.
But what I, I was just thinking, they're saying two, we used to go ten, why not five, six?
I'm, I'm good with that.
Say that a little bit.
That's just a huge drop on core subjects.
I, I, I don't disagree with you.
And maybe because we did go down on some, some of these already, like you said, uh...
And that way, we could go ahead and approve it, and like we could say six. Would y'all be opposed to that? Because that is for new hires. It doesn't affect anybody that's already.
Because somebody that's there, they're still getting one.
They're getting one out.
So if I could propose this, then I will start to do research, our team will research, modify this compensation plan. Once approved, anyone we hired who qualifies for the higher rate, we would go back in and we would pay them, uh, back to their original hire date if someone qualifies for one that's now higher. But also what it will do, it will help us in future recruiting, but next school year or second semester next school year, and it would already be in place rather than waiting until next, uh, season, if that's what you guys would like us to do.
Are, are y'all okay with six?
Six for all subjects or just six for?
Math, reading, science. Math, reading, math, English, science.
Middle school and high school is the same?
Yes. They're tested.
Yes.
Yeah, I like it.
I, I can bring it back in October and you can, you can, uh...
That's a big.
Review it in motion in October. And I'll, I'll also come with numbers on who did we hire? Because remember, everybody else was grandfathered. But who did we hire qualified for it? And now they'll be receiving an increase. And then you'll see the new plan, uh, that you'll approve. And, and I, I like at this point just to approve the entire compensation plan, even though that may be the only thing that changes. That way, when I post it, everything was approved.
What grade is social studies tested? Is it, it's just one grade, right?
Eight, and then this, as a sophomore.
So I guess what, when we make, when we make the motion, we need to?
We need to add it to the motion, yes.
Add it to the motion since it's not what we're approving?
That's what I would like to do.
Do what?
We need to add it to the motion.
When we make the motion.
Approve the compensation plan as presented with those three changes.
So I, I, we, I asked this question. Some people teach social studies, but they're not certified to teach social studies, and it's not a tested area, or it's not an area where it's an actual social studies course. So those are some of the kind of specifics we have to be careful of. So if I'm a kindergarten teacher and I teach social studies, you just do, I now qualify for it. Those are the kind of things that we have to rule out.
I'm just talking tested, like tested, high school tested.
So you're just talking about tested areas.
Right, high school, high school, middle school.
That's a big clarification, right?
Right, high school, middle school, tested area.
High school, middle school, tested areas.
Yes.
All right, if you make the motion, I'll make it happen, and then I will send it out as a draft before I post it to make sure it's been approved, but I'll make sure that the draft reads correctly. And I ask for that because sometimes I may write it one way, but it can be interpreted in multiple ways.
I like it. Six thousand. I like it.
Every, everyone, okay. That's going to add to people who currently aren't receiving, and that'd be great. That, that, that helps with retention.
So when we, uh, during the board action item, we just need to make sure we word it the right. Tested subject, six thousand dollars.
For tested subjects.
Middle school and high school, correct.
And can I say? Can you talk?
Go ahead, yes.
Social studies is the only core subject that's not eligible for T I A.
So this is good for them.
So this is going to be, we have some amazing social studies teachers that are rocking and they're not getting that access to T I A yet. Where we had it was our.
Were we able to change our, our?
We were able to, there were things we could change. We could not change who Lamisa originally deemed eligible.
Right, but.
We were able to change what it took to reach it.
Reach, okay.
And then we'll resubmit, because you resubmit modifications every spring. So I've been talking with the social studies teachers. If we can figure out a way to get them in, I think we should.
It's just two or three years away because of it. It's a, it's a year behind.
But I mean, I want to make it clear to them too, we're, they're, these, these core subjects, they're going to be held to a little higher standards.
Hundred percent.
We're expecting.
Results.
Results.
Understood. Any other questions or feedback?
I like it.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It'll be fast. Y'all know I say that and then I ramble for thirty minutes on the Sunday audio update. Uh, on the legislature guys, I, I have, there are several things that I want to talk about, but I'm only going to, because of time, I'm only going to hit what I deem as the most important ones. I do think it's interesting that there were the most bills ever filed in the ADA legislature, but the, the least bills ever passed. There were 8,046 total bills filed. There were only 1,246 of them passed. That's a 15.5% passing rate. Obviously, y'all have heard tonight, House Bill 1416, that was what Jasper was saying, her secretary happened to know about. They did go back and, and reconfigure the 4545. You guys are going to get a folder when I leave here, and there's some information in the back about how kind of the 4545 flow chart looks now. Then of course, there was House Bill Three, that was the safety bill that Dr. Nelson's done a great job with that grant to make sure that we were in compliance. This one is going to factor in next year. There's a Senate Bill 2124, and I'm going to get Baumann to chime in a little, starting next school year. If they score in the top 40% in fifth grade, what has not been clarified by anybody is that the 40% locally, 40% region or 40% state. Once that's clarified, if they score in the top 40% of whatever range that is, then they are immediately placed into an advanced mathematics track. Okay? Which means, and this is statewide, and it is an opt-out program, not an opt-in. So you as a parent, if you don't call the school, they're in it. You can call them and tell them you don't want them in it, but if you don't call, that means they're automatically in it. And the goal of that is by the time they are done in eighth grade, they have already taken and passed Algebra I and the Algebra I E O C. So I will let you kind of expand on that a little because it will affect us, it will affect everybody because it is going to eventually have to add an entirely different math track, which means a math teacher that has to be certified, which will be good under what we just talked about. We kind of expand on that a little.
So, like back when Maddie and them were in, in middle school, we had Algebra I in eighth grade, but the way they did it is sixth grade, they took sixth grade, seventh grade, they took seventh grade, eighth grade, they took both. What they're talking about now is different. So in sixth grade, if you're on that advanced track, you'll do all of sixth grade, half of seventh, and take the sixth grade star. Seventh grade, you'll finish seventh grade, all of eighth, take the eighth grade math star as a seventh grader, and then in eighth grade, you'll do Algebra I. What they haven't said is if that's the only way to do it, or if we could double up like sixth grade and then seventh and eighth one year, but what they're doing is splitting those three grades into two. And so, um, like Teach Resource System, the service center, they're all trying to figure out how this is going to work, but we haven't gotten very much clarification. And I guess last week I was at the service center and they're like, they kind of don't want to say too much because of what it's going to do. But if you're going to teach that advanced class, it will go on a completely different scope and sequence than the rest of the grade level if we do it that way. So whoever teaches that, sixth grade teacher has to teach sixth and half of seventh. Whoever's in the seventh grade, as that cohort moves up, there's now going to be one that does half of seventh grade, all of eighth grade. So, it'll grow with them, it's always based on their fifth grade scores. So, this year's fifth graders will be who?
The first ones.
So, it has to go into effect in the 24, 25 school year, the track.
And much like legislative things, we'll get more information as it gets closer, or after the fact. They do that a lot too. But, it is coming, and I don't dislike it, I'm not going to lie. I like that our kids are going to have Algebra I done early. Logistically speaking, it's still tricky to figure out how that will look. Okay? Y'all got questions over that? Okay. The last big one, and it's the one I've talked about the most, is the vouchers, the school choice. And I'm going to talk a little more about it now because it's close. The special session is close, and they're going to talk to you guys at the Tassit Tazby conference next week about the special session. But the Senate inserted school choice into this, to all public school funding every step of the way. Governor Abbott said he will not have any conversations over public school funding without talking about the school choice. In fact, the special session he's going to call will probably only be called for vouchers. Consequently, within the conversation of vouchers, public school funding is going to get addressed, but it won't be called for public school funding, it'll be called for vouchers. He puts something out every week that basically says, "We will have vouchers." He put something out just the other day, says, "If y'all vote it down, I'll find another way to get it put in." For whatever reason, and we know the reason, there's some very wealthy people pushing it. So, last week at our TASSA meeting, and it was interesting because at that meeting, you can tell when the, when the, they bring someone from Austin, you can tell when it matters, because all of a sudden, the Lubbock superintendent, Keith Bryant from Lubbock Cooper, the Friendship Superintendent, who usually are kind of sitting in the back eating donuts, they're all front and center listening, because this is about to affect everybody. And basically, what the guy from Austin told us, he said, "Y'all are about to have to make a choice. You're going to have to decide, is it worth fighting and risking the government starving you of money? Or, do you want to give in a little bit so that you will still get funded? We don't know what the right answer is." What he thinks is going to happen, he thinks they're going to throw up so much two-year money at us that it's going to be so appealing, and they're going to try to work vouchers in at the most minimal level. And what it will look like, it will be every special education student, and then every student who attends an F-rated campus will qualify for school choice. That's how it started in Arizona, okay? That's how it started in Florida. This year, and I have it in here, Arizona did that in 2011, and they originally budgeted 65 million. That was what, nine years ago? I'm not good at math, that was nine years ago? This year, they budgeted 900 million for school choice. And what they are seeing is the destruction of small public schools. It is happening in Arizona, and it's happening in Florida. We don't know, we don't know. What the guy told us is we need to fight for permanent money. He said, "They're going to give you so much for two years, it's going to seem worth it." And you're going to give people raises, and you're going to hire people, much like Esser. And in two years, they're going to take all that money away. And all those people that you hired for, they said, "You're not going to have enough money to pay." So, what they told us is fight for permanent money. Don't just give in for two-year money, fight for permanent money. It's about to be very interesting. They believe the special session will not get called until after, and this sounds crazy, after the OU-Texas game, because that's a huge donor weekend for the government. And he doesn't want to make anybody mad prior to that weekend. So, they expect it literally to be called the Monday after the OU-Texas game. It's about to be a fight, and for the first time, I heard people I respect, Kathy from Lubbock and Keith from Lubbock Cooper, always have been like, "No, no, no." And finally, I heard them say, "So, do we need to start negotiating? Is it coming, no matter what we do?" And unfortunately, I would say today, that answer is probably yes. Will it hit us originally? No. But much like in Arizona and Florida, what ends up popping up are what is called microschools. And y'all should Google that sometime, because if you want to start a microschool, anybody in this room could start a microschool out of Arizona. There is literally a how-to-start-a-micro-school document on the internet. And here's what's scary about it, guys. Those schools, private schools, they don't have to pass the star. Teachers do not have to be certified. It makes everything easier on students, and it makes everything easier on teachers. And that's what scares me, because it's already hard for us to get teachers. And if all of a sudden, they can go somewhere where they don't have to teach star, and they don't have to be certified, it makes things very complicated for us. So, it is very scary. And I tell you all that before we go to Tassit Tazby, so we can really listen and decide, because I do, I think it's about to be a fight, and we got to decide kind of where we are going to stand on that fight. It's scary. Y'all have any questions over that? That's the, that's the, sorry, I feel like the attorney that came that day.
Can a public school turn into a charter school?
It's a good question. That's a good question.
If they will throw money in vouchers, I mean, flip it on them.
I know they haven't thought of everything, and here's something else involved in it that is even scarier. The Senate also wants to implement with this free transfers. Okay? So, right now, you pretty much have to live in district, right? We can accept a transfer, y'all know all the schools neighboring us, they've accepted transfers from our kids. The Senate wants to put in free transfers, so a kid can go to any school anytime. So, they can start at Lamisa, and they can go over to Lubbock, and it doesn't, they don't have to have any addresses, they don't have to have any reason, they can just go. And where that's scary is if you think about it, a kid, we would be funded over the 1,500 students that are here today, but if 100 students showed up from Lubbock ISD, our taxpayer money is now paying for those kids, while their money's actually going to where they started over in Lubbock ISD. It doesn't add up. And then, take the athletic side of it, if you don't think that's going to open up the recruiting, it's about, it's about to get insane, and I'm very worried, because I do know Governor Abbott's never been on legislature, so I don't think he knows how the legislative process works. But it also, I don't believe the people making these decisions, I don't think, I know they've never worked in a public school, and I'm afraid they never went to a public school, and they don't know what they are about to do. So, that's the legislative update. I think we're going to get really versed on that during the Tassit Tazby, and I'm excited about going to all of the legislative stuff. And the last thing I would say is, y'all know they moved the ratings, right? They were about to come out with the ratings. The reason they were going to come out with the ratings is because most people were going to drop a letter grade, and then they were immediately going to have a special session that said, "Any student going to an F campus is now eligible for vouchers." And if they drop that letter grade, because they changed accountability, all of a sudden, you got a whole lot more students that are F campus that are eligible for the vouchers. I mean, it was all a big scheme. And luckily, someone got ahold of Commissioner Marat and said, "This is a bad look, we need to move it." And I'm glad they did. And we had a Zoom today, and they're looking at changing the cut points for accountability. They've gone all the way back to the drawing board, so that whole presentation I gave you that day, we'll have to do it again when they tell us the new cut points, and we'll see what our new rating will be. Questions over that? Okay. Moving on to construction, I did want to add that back, because I did want y'all to be aware that we did have to get Lee Lewis back out here. The new gym has leaks galore. And the roof people were. You what?
We were torn with that guy.
He called it.
Yeah, it, and we thought it would, but the roof people and the concrete people, the concrete people, the brim of the blame, and the roof people, the roof people, so finally, we just, we called Lee Lewis and David Montoya, and finally got him out here. And we took a tour with him on Monday, and he took notes and pictures of everything, and he assured us that he will get the right people out here to make sure we get it fixed. So, it's not just going to, I just didn't want y'all to think we're just going to let it happen. It's just, we had to get the right people out here that are willing to help us get it done. And then the last thing I have, guys, is Tassit Tazby, but I'm not going to talk about it. You're going to get a black folder, and in the black folder, it has, I told y'all on the thing I was going to, if you want to go and give them one, it's got updates on all of the goals we're doing. But at the back, and I told y'all, I will have a very specific itinerary. At the back is an itinerary that I'd like you to look over, about when we would leave Thursday, where we would leave from. It has everything, where we're eating, where our hotel is, how far everything is from the hotel.
I'm going to wear heels, so we can't be walking that far.
Twelve-minute walk, twelve-minute walk, everybody. Twelve-minute walk from hotel.
I need to know, though, for real, though, because.
It isn't walking, we've done it before.
No, that was San Antonio, and then this, y'all two walking 100 miles an hour, and he was, he stayed with me.
Y'all can Uber yourselves.
No, I figured it out. My first night at dinner, just drive me out by the door, y'all can do whatever y'all need.
I also went ahead and added this at the back, it's a different kind of program, it's a little more specific, and then there's a map behind it. Those are the very last pages in this book. Everything up to that is just information about all of the things we talked about tonight. But I'll also include just the itinerary on Sunday's board update, so you can just look at that and make sure y'all are good with leaving when we're leaving, leaving from where we're leaving. We will take two vehicles, I do believe some people are taking their own cars. I think I heard two people.
I got a Lincoln State.
Here, it looks like you're having trouble. You found it, it looked like you were having trouble. I was going to give you that one.
I'm still thinking of the walk.
Everything we have there, I put in there how far it is from where we're at, so you can kind of see everything. So, the last thing in your folder, guys, is this. It is something, if you didn't get one, it should have been in there, let me know. This is something I give to all of my leadership, I gave it to them the first day I got here. And how many of y'all have read it? Don't even lie.
Yesterday, I just finished.
I've read this book about 10 times, and I started reading it as a coach, and it's one of the best leadership books that I think you could read, but it also helped me as a father. It has helped me in every way in my life, and so I try to give it to anybody that I deem in a leadership position. And you guys are in the biggest leadership position in the district, so I just wanted to share it with you guys as well. Merry Christmas. You're welcome. That is all I have. Do you guys have any questions over any of that stuff? It was a lot. Thank y'all for everything that you do.
And everybody still plans to go, right?
Yes, and I'll need Kevin.
Do y'all know Mr. Teltchik, was he going to take his own car with him?
No, I thought he was coming with us, and Lisa was meeting us.
We're going to take two vehicles, no matter what, that way we don't have to worry about.
Because I was making fun of him, I was making fun of both of them, because I already knew, and he was all, "I might go, Lisa can meet us."
Shelley was fine, but she's going to Grand Grand Express Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Wednesday.
Yes, ma'am. I'm excited about Tassit Tazby, I keep saying I've never been, but the closer it gets, the more I read about it, I'm getting excited.
It's fun, well, we'll be able to enjoy it more this year. It's not bad, it's just the heels, I just need to be prepared.
How about those?
There'll be more walking this time.
It's not bad, like I.
Lieutenant Tom Kovicher of Rutherford Motel.
Yeah, I mean, there is walking, but nothing, anything over 12-minute walk, I have Uber on hand.
You can rent a scooter.
That's what I was going to say.
They're not very tall, but.
What are they called, the ones, the things that all big cities have?
Okay, let's go.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
If we go to the board action items, we'll go with the first deliberation and possible action to approve the district improvement plan as presented.
Make a motion to approve as presented?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, six to zero. Next is deliberation and possible action to approve the revised 2023, 2024 compensation plan.
Make a motion to approve as presented with the correction of $6,000 stipend to tested subjects at high, at middle school and high school.
Perfect.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, six to zero.
We're good.
Any further action, any further business to come before the board, this meeting is adjourned.
Okay, Mary Elizabeth.